All right, I am going to start the meeting then. Everybody's ready?
No.
Is ready?
I'm not.
I would love a couple more minutes to transition between meetings, but if we need to start, we can start.
Okay, here we go.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everyone. I call the January 11th, 2022 regular city council meeting to order. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 2028 regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via a link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zornz?
Yeah.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil? Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dore?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra? Thank you. All present.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or your yellow card when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first meeting item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I will move to presentations, reports, and briefings. Do we have public engagement opportunities?
We do. Give me just one second. Everybody seeing that?
Yep.
Okay, now you read it, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you. All right, we have the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee to help create city services that are fair and accessible for all. If you'd like to be a part of this, please apply to become part of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee today at bethelwa.gov/DEIcommittee. We also have the Bothell Bridge Winter Edition 2021 and 2022. You can see the latest city of Bothell news today by reading the quarterly Bothell Bridge newsletter online at bethelwa.gov/bridge. All right, next up, we have a city manager recruitment process review. And we have Heather Gans and interim city manager Len Hart here to talk to us about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Happy New Year to you all again. Tonight, we have Heather Gans, our recruiter from Ruff Palace, returning to speak to you about the process for the city manager recruitment. This evening will be the first of two touches to talk about resuming the recruitment. So primarily Heather will be talking to you about schedule, about proposed schedule, and then laying out some things for your conversation next week primarily. So with that, I will hand it over to Heather.
Thanks, Erin. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you again. Happy New Year. Wish we were not necessarily talking this topic, but here we are. So I wanted to engage in, as Erin mentioned, we'll have two meetings. Just a quick discussion this evening, mostly about proposed timeline and next steps. And then next week, our goal through our conversation on Tuesday evening is to update and fine tune the recruitment brochure and any additional conversations around process. We have time on process, but at least an initial dialogue and discussion around process. Recreating the timeline, just a friendly reminder, we did a tremendous amount of outreach and engaging in conversations. We had the survey. We had conversations with the leadership team. Staff participated in the survey. We had a good response from the community as well, and then, of course, conversations with, at the time, the existing council members, all providing wonderful input into our brochure that we used for the recruitment process. We want to make sure that we're doing any updates to that document, particularly with our new council members, making sure that their voices are a part of that document. I know that Matt sent out that document. We'd love for you to be able to read through that. Note any changes, additions, updates to that. We'll really dig into that next week, but wanted to make sure that we give you a friendly reminder to do that so that we could make any adjustments as necessary. Once we do that next week, our goal is to move quickly to make those updates to the document and then ensure that we are posting the position by the end of next week and beginning our outreach the week of the 24th. So we'll move relatively quickly to launch right back into the recruitment mode, doing outreach again, networking, seeking referrals. I already have some names of some people that could very well be interested. So those conversations have already started, even though we have not quite updated the brochure yet. Our goal is to then solicit and accept applications through the end of February. We'll come back to you about mid-February and just provide a brief update to the council on how the recruitment process is going, but looking to solicit resumes and applications through the end of February. And then having a council meeting on the 8th of March to review applicant materials, candidate materials, similar to what we did last time. And I'll happily share some additional information for our new council members. That would, of course, be an executive session on March 8. We would look to do semifinal interviews in the virtual space, of course, similar to what we did last time. The dates that we had tentatively identified would be the 17th and 18th of March. Our request, and one thing that Matt and I and Erin would want you to think about, is taking advantage of some daytime hours. When we did those interviews last time, they were in the early evening hours. So thinking if we plan ahead and have those dates outlined, is there the opportunity to take advantage of some daytime hours? Again, the 17th and 18th of March. We would then look to do final interviews the 4th and 5th of April. That would be the week before the Washington spring break, so hopefully we'll take advantage. Won't take advantage of anybody's family time or kids out of school time on that one. Mostly, the council would be needed on the 5th. We'd be doing some activities on the 4th, but the real date for the council would be the 5th of April. I'll pause ever so slightly to make sure everybody got those dates. I can certainly send out an updated timeline, of course, for your review and consideration, but as of now, that's what we're thinking. So relatively, we want to be able to move through it relatively quickly. I know April sounds far away, but it's really not. It's a pretty aggressive timeline to keep us moving. Any questions on that? I'm seeing nope. Great. The other thing that I want to spend a little bit of time thinking about, or I guess the more detailed question is, are you comfortable with spending some daytime hours on some of these interviews, the semifinal and final interviews? That is not something that we did last time, so want to be able, we don't need to answer that question now, but something that I would like for the group to consider moving forward. We can talk in greater detail about that next week. And then process wise, want to be able to engage in a conversation and dialogue about any potential changes to the interview process. More specifically, the final interview process. If you'll remember, we did an employee forum and a community forum. The candidates went on a tour, and then they met with the leadership team. And then, of course, you all as council members, with our newly elected council members participating in that process as well, wanted to be able to engage in discussion around if that worked, if it didn't work, where we may want to make changes. We don't need to solidify anything this evening, but if there's any suggestions that the group has, would love to hear them so that we can engage in further conversation and dialogue about them next week. No thoughts? Y'all a quiet group this evening.
Councilmember Zornz?
Yep.
Just real quick, it sounds like a great format. Personally, for my schedule, I got to go see if I already have commitments for being in the classroom. But I really appreciated the final interview because I thought my gut was that it gave staff a good feel for who the candidates were, gave the candidates a good feel of what the city is, and it was very enlightening of what we did remote versus in person, the difference in candidates. So there's no changes that leap to my mind.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor, I think you had your hand finger up.
I don't have the cool cards that council members, so I have to do this. Yeah, no, thank you so much. I felt that I wasn't involved in the front end of the process. We were only involved in the end of the process. I was part of the community forum. I thought that that was a great idea. I feel that maybe we can enhance that by actually having community members contribute something to the conversation. So that will be actually an interview instead of just one thing. I had a question about your daytime interviews, just like councilmember Zornz, you know, there are some daytime restrictions, you know, for some of us. So I wonder what you mean exactly by daytime interviews?
We would be, for semifinal interviews, we were thinking potentially the afternoon. So from, you know, say, 1:00 to 4:00, 1:00 to 5:00 on the 17th, and then any carryover the morning of the 18th. So starting at maybe, you know, sometime between 8:00 and 9:00, wrapping up the interviews and then finishing up by lunchtime. So it'd be two half days that we'd be looking at. We could certainly do them all in one day, but as you know, that would be an extremely long day to interview, you know, eight candidates or so in one day. So we split it up over an afternoon and a morning. And, you know, we could certainly do it in the evening hours, but daytime is simpler and easier for the candidates. I recognize it's harder for you all, but we thought that we might put it out there, especially if we could put dates on the calendar early enough. We could potentially plan accordingly. Councilmember Dore?
I'm wondering about the possibility of a weekend. Like the Saturday, what is it, the 12th?
Well, if we have the meeting on the 8th, the 12th would be a relatively quick turnaround. But we could certainly look at a weekend option.
Yeah, I'm not. I just.
Yeah, put it out there. Yep. The other two, to your point, deputy mayor, when Matt and I had a discussion about the process, we thought it might be a good idea to do a community stakeholder panel, which would give designated community members that the council would select to participate in an actual interview with candidates, similar to what you all did, as well as the leadership team did, so we can engage in further conversation about that next week. But that is an idea and an option to have some additional time with some key community partners or key community stakeholders. Additional questions, thoughts, comments?
I just wanted to jump in and say I thought the public forum was actually really helpful. From, I mean, from the public's point of view, but also from our point of view, I think it's really valuable to see how candidates engage with the public and how they respond in that circumstance. I'd also be interested in looking at a weekend option. I know, you know, most of us up here work in stiffs. That it'd be easier if we could do an all-day Saturday instead of two half-days during the week.
Okay. Thank you for that input. Greatly appreciated. Anyone else? We're hoping, you know, I think that we need to continue to think in the virtual space for a community forum. I don't anticipate us being in a place where we can gather larger groups of people together in late, you know, late March, early April, but we'll continue to, of course, monitor that and keep tabs on our current health environment to make sure that we're making decisions that are in the best interest of everyone involved. The health, safety, and well-being of everyone's important.
Councilmember Dore, I think you have your hand up.
Thank you. Can, I'm sorry, can you remind me again, when would kind of the call for interested parties go out and when would it end?
We would look to, after our meeting on the 18th, we would look to move quickly to make updates to the existing brochure and plan to do at least the advertisements by the end of the week. So the 18th is a Tuesday, so hoping for the 19th or 20th would be ideal. And then our direct outreach would start going out Monday, the 24th.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry, I kind of missed all the details.
Oh, that's okay. I'll send a timeline out to everyone. And then we would receive materials and applications through the end of February. It's a five-week. We did a five-week recruitment period. We thought we could certainly stretch it a week if necessary. But we thought we, given the beginning of the new year, it might be a great opportunity to tighten up the timeline and continue to move ourselves forward. Additional questions? Yeah, Mayor?
I was just gonna say I don't see any more questions.
It was good to see everybody. Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes this evening. I look forward to being back with you next week, where we'll engage in some wonderful conversations about updating the brochure. So make sure that you, we've already received a couple of comments, so thank you for those of you that have taken the time already. But any additional thoughts that you have, we'll engage in those details next Tuesday.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Heather.
All right. Great to see everybody. Take care.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, next up, we have the interim, oh, councilmember Zornz?
A pledge of allegiance.
We skipped it earlier in the meeting.
Why did we skip it?
Because it's pretty awkward doing it virtually. So I went back to what we had done historically in the pandemic up until a few months ago.
Okay.
All right, interim city manager report, I believe, is up next.
I have none this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next up is visitor comment. Do we have any visitor comment?
Actually, we have council committee reports, Mayor.
Oh, you know what? You're right. It's right there. Do we have council committee reports? While I'm waiting, I just want to say, councilmember McNeil, you've got a lovely background. I appreciate it tremendously.
Thank you.
All right, I went to GMPB. The subject of the year, I think, is going to be industrial lands and what those bring to the region. So we had a brief conversation around that and gave some direction, and I'll probably have more to say on that later in the year. All right, now, do we have any visitor comment?
I do not have anybody that signed up to speak, and we did not receive any written comments. I do see a few people in the audience, so if anybody in the audience would like to make any visitor comment, please use the raise your hand function, and I will panel you in, give them a minute to do that. And while we're waiting, oh, you took it down. Never mind. I was gonna say to councilmember Zornz, her raise hand function was up, but she took it down. So, nope, nobody raised their hand. We're good.
All right. Well, in that case, we are going to move on to Agenda Bill 22003, Protocol Manual Update and Discussion. And city clerk Hathaway, I believe that you are going to introduce this item and lead the discussion?
I am, and if you give me just one second, I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see this? Can you see that? Great. So, yes, I will begin. So the Protocol Manual is a guide that is a council document. It's a guide to help us in the expectations for the council and the documented accepted practices for the council. The manual is updated every two years or as needed. This is the council's manual, and you can make any changes you wish. We went through it, and we revised pronouns, clarified current technologies within the manual, and did some minor housekeeping issues on it before we sent it out to you all last week. There are a few sections within the protocol manual that staff is looking for direction on. Specifically, I'll go through those one by one. The section 2.08-D6, the advisory bodies, this is always, we kind of flip-flop on this each time we revise this, each time we bring this manual to the council. The manual currently calls for the council member liaison to be assigned to each board and commission. And our question is, is that helpful? Are you finding that helpful? Does council want to continue this practice, or is there another way in which you'd like to hear from your boards and commissions? So there's that. I don't know. Do you want to stop and discuss each one of these as we go? Or do you want me to go through the PowerPoint first, and then we can come back to it?
Why don't we stop and have a discussion here? And then move on rather than having to flip back and forth on the presentation? Councilmember Dore?
Thank you, Mayor. Originally, I really liked the idea of the liaisons because it just seemed like there was a disconnect. But I think, in fact, what it did was kind of create a disconnect between all of council and the boards and commissions. So everyone had their kind of pet board or commission, but all of council really didn't get to reflect or kind of know what was going on with boards and commissions. So I would like to propose that maybe we go back to what we had done before in terms of having like at least once yearly meeting with the entire board and commission and the entire council, so that everyone's on board and everyone knows kind of what's going on and that council as a whole gets to maybe create a little more direction and talk about priorities for the council within each board and commission. Would love to hear what other people have to think about that idea.
Councilmember Zornz, in this, when Laura is presenting, could you please use the raise hand function? Because I can't see all the council members, and I don't want to miss people that are raising their hands or showing the card.
Okay, point taken. I agree with councilmember Dore that it might be a little territorial. I think territorialism kind of happened by default because we broke it up into responsibilities. The point is that council stays connected with our boards and commissions. And I don't think there's anything to stop any council member from going to any time boards and commissions meet. So if we stay on top of that, well, there is the problem of having a quorum, isn't there, for some of these? That's probably why we decided to assign that. As I'm thinking out loud here, I would say if council members want to be assigned to a board or a commission, keep it that way and so that any of us who want to drop in and attend any of the boards and commissions, we go through that liaison to make sure there's no quorum. I don't know if that would work, but I really would like, starting off twice a year, meeting with the boards and commissions on how they're doing, sharing their concerns. Maybe what we'd need to do is break up the boards and commissions and do half, one part of the year and half the other part of the year. But I really would like to meet with them all together as well. Those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you. As somebody who just recently came from a commission, I want to speak to the experience of a commissioner during COVID times and how the virtual format affects kind of the normal way of doing things. And it felt more disconnected from the council because not only do you have the separation between councils, boards, and the city council and the commissions, you also have this virtual, like, not in-person separation as well. So what I'm hearing being proposed by councilmember Dore and councilmember Zornz, I'm on board with. The opportunity to meet with council, aside from like the interview process, is welcome. I'm just going to speak from just recently having served on a commission in that way. I think that that would be good all the way around. So I'm in support of that, especially the idea of splitting up into two groups and doing half at each time of year, and we can rotate that way.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
I have a question. So the language says that assign a council liaison who may report to the full council regarding board. So, you know, when I was also in landmarks last year, there was nobody from council on landmarks. So how was this supposed to work in the first place? I guess that's my question. For the old timers.
We didn't change the protocol manual, but two years ago when I came on board, we sort of stopped doing the assignments when we did board and committee assignments, like we did last week. We just didn't do it. So we haven't actually been doing it this way for a couple of years, as it says in our protocol manual. Does that answer your question?
It does. So does that mean, then, does follow-up? Should we remove that language and/or make it optional? It is optional now, de facto, right?
Well, yeah, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about kind of what should we do and what should that look like? And what we decide to do probably should have matching language in our protocol manual.
Okay, because I agree that it will be good to connect. I agree with councilmember Zornz that maybe more than once a year, twice a year, might be a good, how we divide it up is to just maintain that connection, remain up to date on what's going on.
So if I could just jump in here real quick, whatever council decides on any of these items tonight, this evening, we'll incorporate them into the protocol manual and bring it back for your approval at a later meeting, either next week or the following meeting. So.
Thank you, Laura.
I'm taking notes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would like to still have FaceTime like everybody else has said. I think it's important to interact with our board and commission members. I would also find it helpful, I don't know if others would as well, but I would find it helpful to have, you know, maybe a quarterly report from each of the boards and commissions in our packet, just to hear the types of things they're working on, their successes, their challenges. Doesn't have to be, you know, doesn't have to be a long paper, but just something to kind of fill us in as things are going along so that we can be more connected to them and understand more about what they're working on in their commission or board.
All right, I see you, councilmember Alderks. I am going to take my turn, and then we, oh, councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Something that comes to mind, are these meetings recorded at all? These boards and commission meetings? These boards and commission meetings recorded at all?
They are. They're all through Zoom.
Okay, so they're, they are recorded, so that there's an opportunity to go back and, and watch them?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I feel that there's a disconnect between us and our boards and commissions. And I feel that our boards and commissions, the members often don't really understand what their role is or how it relates to the greater goals that, that we all share. I would really like to focus on making sure, especially when onboarding and maybe we do a refresher course, that our, that our boards and commissions understand kind of what their, not just responsibilities are in terms of showing up, but what they are able to do and, um, how they would have an agenda, um, that, that fits in with what we're doing. Um, I, the interim city manager had, um, an idea about essentially getting a chance to peek into their work plan, um, like we do with the planning commission, so we can kind of see what that board is, uh, looking to do, proposing, and, and engage with them a little bit more. And, and, and just give them a better idea of kind of what their job is to give them more confidence to do their job. I feel like, um, you know, I'm, I'm two years off of being on one of the boards and I feel like it wasn't super clear, like exactly what your role was in the meeting. And, and they can get just very staff-led, which is, uh, outside of staff's responsibilities and they've got enough to do. I also think, um, if we did a study session a couple of times a year, you know, we're talking about, um, you, you know, getting together with them and, and talking through things in their work plan, um, it seems like a study session might be a good place for that. All right, Councilmember Aldrich, did you, do you want to go for seconds?
Um, I was just going to, uh, just kind of, uh, reiterate what a council member McNeil said, or, uh, uh, Manki said, that, uh, one of the other options available to us, which we sometimes would see, especially in pandemic times, is, um, when the, when, when a border commission wants to bring something to council, it ends up being in, in, uh, public comment. And, um, maybe it's part of the orientation that you're describing where we can, um, just let members of those boards and commissions know that they can come and speak to us, um, as like, you know, as a subcommittee or, um, or, you know, their chair can come and get, kind of give a report. And maybe that's something that we make, um, that is routine, that a couple, like a quarter, um, once a quarter, we could possibly hear from the chair of a commission, uh, in, on our agenda and just hear what they're working on and how things are going.
Intraum City Manager Lenhart.
Just to weigh in, Councilmember Aldrich, I think that's a great idea. And I had talked to staff previously about the awkwardness of requiring that our boards and commissions come during public comment. So I definitely think that we could agendize it separately so that we give them A, more time and also some more certainty as far as when they would be on the agenda and, um, have that opportunity to speak with the council. So I, I would support that from the staff perspective.
I thi- I think it's a great idea also. All right, I don't see any more hands. Um, the only other thing I was going to bring up is, I, I don't, oh, Councilmember Doer.
Just wanted to offer, if you need four, that I'm in favor of, uh, Councilmember Manki's suggestion.
Thank you. Um, one other thing, I, I didn't find it particularly helpful when I was on a border commission. Having a council member there, you know, we have a little bit of gravity and can kind of tilt the room sometimes and, um, but I feel like it would be helpful, um, almost to have a council liaison to a border commission and a mentorship role. So if anybody on that border commission has a specific question, like they have a council member they can call and say, hey, like, I've got a question. Um, I'd be more than happy to do that. That sounds to me more attractive than another meeting to attend, um, and probably more productive. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, are you suggesting to keep the language as is then?
No.
You said it'll be good to have, uh, to maintain that liaison. I, yeah.
Uh, I mean, in a, in a very different sense than we're currently doing it, not that goes to the meetings, but just have, have somebody that, that they can call when they have a question.
Hmm. Yeah, I, uh, as a, uh, a recent member also of, uh, one of the boards, I, I, uh, we have staff, uh, folks usually with us to, uh, guide us on these things. So I don't know how uh, having a council member be, you know, on the hook, so to speak, with boards and commissions in general, right? I don't know. I, I don't know if I, that language to me seems puts more burden on council members.
I'm not proposing we keep this language, just.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm riffing off of your idea. Yeah, no, I'm, on my previous question when I asked the first question.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I feel like, uh, it's good to have a connection with council via the methods we discussed earlier. I don't know if we need to put, I, um, keep the language that somebody from council should be there, unless the definition of council liaison is staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Zornz.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of having a liaison with some flexibility. So having them be available as a shout-out if that, you know, a, uh, border commissioner member has a question or visit, or has the opportunity to go in and be part of the meeting. I don't think we need to describe, define exactly all their obligations, except that they are a contact person to get a person, uh, who's on a border commission connected and started. So I, I'm fine. I, I think it's important to have a liaison person if council's feeling stressed. S- some of these boards and commissions meet very sporadically, and I think other council members would, uh, might step up and take one or two extra, uh, boards or commissions. So, um, I, I, I'm in the support of having a liaison, but, but it's not the only person that a board or commissioner member could reach. We have staff and other council as well.
Yeah, Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you. Uh, have we, have we had any recent conversations with the board or commission chairs, uh, to see how they feel the interaction is with council? Is there any information or feedback that they could give us on, um, what things we can do better to communicate with them? Or to be able to come together and, and have kind of a study session? Is there, is there any feedback from them?
I'm, I'll attempt to answer that. I've not heard anything, um, but we do have a staff liaison assigned to each of these boards and commissions. I can certainly ask them to ask their board and commission chair, um, and, and provide some feedback to council on that. And ask them, what, what do they want from council or would they, how do they feel about, um, you know, meeting twice a year with the council? Or doing a quarterly report? I can ask that question.
Yeah, I'd be, and I, I kind of feel like it'd be important to kind of understand, um, how we can communicate and collaborate better together uh, from their perspective as well as ours. I do like the, the idea of, of having, uh, updates, um, having those updates not in visitor comments, but the ability to do them, uh, more of a robust update. But I also do like having us, having council members be able to participate, uh, in those meetings. And, and the reason why I asked about the, the recordings is because often we don't, we might not have time that night, but we can go back and watch, uh, those meetings and, and update ourselves on kind of the conversation and then engage where we need to engage. But having the ability to be at one of those, those meetings or be a liaison for that, I think it's important for us to continue to have a voice, uh, and also to support them and enforce the things that they're, they're having discussions about.
Okay.
Laura.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, do you, do you have any clarification that you need? That was a lot of conversation that we had. Was that adequate for you or would you like some clarification from the council?
I, I think I'm good. Um, I'll, I'll draft some language and, um, send it out to council before we, we publish the, um, the next, you know, before we publish the agenda for this item when it gets approved. But I, I think I'm good. I, I, you know, I'm pretty sure Erin and Becky are taking notes as well, so we can, we'll get it together and, um, I'll try to, uh, as long as I have consensus on, do I have consensus? I guess I do have a question. Do I have consensus that, um, one, that we want to have a, uh, standing item on the agenda for the boards and commissions to report to council? Um, and it, I don't know if it needs to be on every agenda, but maybe quarterly or, you know, that we have a place for the board and commission liaison chairs to come and report to council. I think that would be a good idea personally. Um, and they, they've actually asked for that in the past.
Does anybody have any objection to that? All right. I think that's our answer.
Okay, great. And then the only other thing is, um, do you want in concre- in conjunction with that, would you want a quarterly report or can they just give their quarterly report then versus a written report?
I mean, I'd love to see them and hear them and just have that sort of engagement and the opportunity to ask them questions and have a conversation. If that's something they'd like to do, if that's something they wouldn't like to do, then, I mean, there's got to be somebody on each board that wants to come and talk to us, right? Um, and, and we could, um, I mean, we could schedule boards, um, so we had them coming on a certain cadence or we could have a particular weekend when we're weak, when we did that and got a bunch of reports. It'd probably be nicer to have them staggered out a little bit. Um, but yes, I would, I would love to have them more involved in our meetings.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so we'll, we'll, and like I said, I'll reach out to the staff liaisons for each of the boards and ask the question, what do, how, how the boards want to communicate with the council as well? And again, and this is your manual, so we can put some language in there for now and we can always tweak it. We don't have to wait two years to tweak it if we get some information that comes back to us after, you know, later.
Yep.
Um, we can, if we decide on other changes this evening that, you know, staff would like direction on, we can incorporate those right away and then come back with some, you know, concrete language for this section at a later date if we need to. So.
And I'll look forward to, I will look forward to hearing back from them. Um, I think that was Councilmember McNeil's idea. That was a good idea.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the staff liaisons tomorrow on that. Um, so thank you. With that, I just, the next question on this section, on the board and commission, uh, section is, does council wish to add language to the board and commission appointment criteria, which we are getting ready to, uh, recruit for, um, very soon, um, to help ensure representation more accurately reflects the demographics of our community? And, and with that, it's, um, like I said, we're getting ready to do our recruitment. Uh, we planned to advertise in the next couple of weeks. And then we have a, like a one-month, um, application period. Um, and then we have, tentatively, we have the interview scheduled for, I believe it's March eighth and the appointment scheduled for, uh, March fifteenth. So, you know, in your interviews, is there, uh, do you wish to add any language to this section, um, regarding the appointments of board and commission members and if you want to have a cross-diversity, um, diverse population? Or strive to get that? I don't know.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off. Councilmember Doer, or Councilmember Zornz, I think, um, had her hand up first.
There we go. Uh, thank you. Uh, it's, it's a no-brainer. That's my first blush. But then I think about, uh, some of our boards and commissions, we have a hard time, we have a hard time in getting people to take those spots. So if we can make it welcoming language for our, our varied demographics and also include, uh, both counties, point out that both counties matter, uh, demographics in both counties matter. That would be great, but, um, we have popular boards and commissions that people dive in and we get a whole bunch apply for that. And then we have other boards and commissions where we have a hard time recruiting and I don't want to scare people off. So if you can find a way to make that welcoming, that would be great.
Councilmember Doer.
My mouse is not cooperating. Thank you. Um, I had a thought. It's kind of peripheral, uh, a little bit, but if you'll indulge me. Um, I think one of the things that prevents, uh, people from applying is that they don't really understand what's involved and what the work is that we're doing. And so I had a thought, um, we had talked about, for instance, um, the work plans around what, um, the different boards and commissions do. And also, I, I know we've got several, um, of things that we'll be working on, one of which includes the Friday night market. And we've talked about wanting to center that around maybe, um, you know, eight Saturdays or, sorry, eight Friday nights, um, in the summertime and center it around a different culture each time. And I think that sort of, um, language within a description when we go out seeking applicants could be very enticing to people that represent diversity that we haven't normally, um, attracted to those kinds of positions because they don't understand how they could contribute. So it's just a thought. Uh, I'd be interested to hear what others, um, think about that idea.
Councilmember Aldrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my initial thought is often when it comes to, when it comes to recruiting greater diversity, it's an outreach problem. It's not the problem with the people that are applying. Uh, and if we're not getting the information where it needs to be, uh, that's on us. And so adding language might give us a reminder to do better outreach. Uh, but I'm not entirely sure that this is targeting the problem that, um, that we're, we're actually trying to solve. Uh, and so I would be interested to hear recommendations from our DEI consultant on what are strategies to, um, improve our outreach so that we can increase and improve our, the representation of our demographics on our boards and commissions. Um, and also I really like what council, uh, member Doer said that, and it may not be, we haven't kind of done the legwork for this next coming up application cycle, but in the future, at each of those, uh, Friday market events, we should have a city table, um, where people can learn about opportunities to be involved and get connected to, uh, city engagement. And that includes boards and commissions. So it may be something that we're outreach in throughout the year so that each time there is a, a festival, a, a Friday night market, that table's there. So people know, like, in, you know, in January, February of the coming year, there's an opportunity to get involved. We can be featuring the work of the boards and commissions at that table, sharing resources from the city. Um, those are just some of my thoughts on what we can do to, to better outreach. And, and I, once again, would question how adding language would improve our, um, like the, the target, what we're trying to accomplish here. Thank you.
Scroll back up. Um, Councilmember Doer, did you have your hand up? You, okay. Councilmember Manki.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Aldrich said exactly what I was thinking. Um, it's usually a recruiting problem. Um, you're not focusing on the right avenues to recruit. So, um, I agree. I don't, I'm not sure that adding language would have the effect that we're looking for. Uh, I also know as, as Councilmember Zornz said, um, we have a hard time filling some positions on some boards and commissions. So I think we really want to encourage people and not discourage them. And adding language could potentially discourage some folks from applying. So ideally, we want all the applications to come in. We want it to be a good subset of our citizens that, you know, that want to apply and want to serve on these boards and commissions. And it's up to us to interview them and, uh, make sure that we're putting, um, putting people on those boards and commissions that we want on the boards and commissions based on all the other criteria that are already listed in two point oh eight B two. So, um, So I would love, as councilmember Aldrick said, having Chairman Kelly Ray look at this as well and, and help us figure out a way to recruit more broadly. And I think that's really the solution we're looking for rather than what we're considering here right now.
Councilmember Alcabra, or Deputy Mayor Alcabra, pardon me.
Oh, it's okay. We're all friends here. Sorry, we're off protocol. The, I, I agree with everything that was said before, except maybe I will, you know, I, you know, I slightly disagree with you, Councilmember Manke. I think the language is very important because whoever applies is going to look at language and the more inclusive the language is, the, the more welcome they feel. Having be, being one of those potentially community members who are diverse, who I'm, I feel like I'm an exception, not the rule, being here, here today and actually serving on landmarks last year and actually applying, it takes a lot of courage to apply, especially for folks who have never been involved in the public realm. So there's a lot of recruiting, a lot of education. I love councilmember Aldrick's, I will volunteer on those tables. And we do need to be intentional in recruiting this. That's why our DEI consultant Shannon's input also will be very important. But I also feel like we do need to maybe relax some of the requirements for some, like, for example, we may not decide not to do this for a planning commission. If we decide we want more, you know, people from different backgrounds to be there, not necessarily professional background, but different cultural backgrounds to be there, but they not be in the planning realm, you know, of things. If we want to have different perspectives, maybe we need to relax our requirement for certain people to be part of those things. So that's why I feel like having language is, is important. We do need to define what demographics of the community is, what that means, that statement. So we have to look at some of that data. I know we're a third people of color, 20% also are immigrants of those, and the majority of the people of color are Asians. And so we need to look at and dissect and see what composition we want, you know, to be, we want, if we want proportional representation to what our community is comprised of. I hope, I hope that made sense. And if you have questions, Laura, please ask.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doer?
No, he's such trouble. I wanted to, I just wanted to share that I, a few years ago, tried to reach out through different, a cultural organization, Taronga, to get more people of color from that organization to apply for boards and commissions. And when I spoke with the representative from that organization, her response was that. It's a shyness and a not understanding of what they have to contribute. And again, I would ask that we have a better description, not only that we're looking for diversity, but why? Why are we looking for diversity? And, and what does that diversity have to offer us as a city? Particularly, you know, not just a different perspective, but like I said, if, if we can list projects such as Friday night markets centered around a different cultural, a different culture every Friday, that gives someone something to latch on to, that they can very specifically see themselves in that role and what they have to offer. Nobody really responded about listing that. I know councilmember Aldrick talked, talked about having a tent there, but I really think you, you see a list of these boards and commissions. And when I applied for a landmark board, I applied because it's, one of the qualifications was architect. And I could very, very clearly set, say what I had to offer. And I think it's a law of reaching out to people and helping them envision themselves as being offer, being able to offer something. And so I, I want to reiterate, we need to not only recruit, but we need to make it really accessible and help them understand what these boards and commissions do, the types of projects are, are things that they work on.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Yeah, the conversation has kind of taken me in many different places, but thankful, glad we're having the conversation. But as I kind of read what it says here, does council wish to add language to the BC appointments criteria to help ensure representation more accurately reflects the demographics of our community? It makes me question, what does that really mean? And so I think, you know, Deputy Mayor Alcabra mentioned intentional. And I think we need to be intentional with understanding what we're trying to say here to our community to do that recruitment process. And we all ran for council for something that we were passionate about. And in order to fill boards and commissions with people within our community, they're going to be people who are passionate about that board and commission. And so in order to change the demographics and the diversity of those positions, we need to be able to reach those individuals within their own community. Even though they're in the community of Bothell, we're all, we all have different communities that, in which we actually thrive in and hang out in. So it's important to be intentional, have a great understanding of what we're trying to accomplish with changing language. And when we talk about demographics, what that means. The deputy mayor alluded to the different diversities that we have within our community. We don't want one part of our community to feel unwelcome because we're making another part of our community feel welcome. So I think it's important that we, we look at it holistically. I think our, our DEI consultant can help with that piece of it. But again, I think as a council, I think it's our responsibility to understand when we, when we talk about changing language and, and trying to reflect the demographics that we truly understand what that means, because it has a much bigger impact on our community than just making a small change, subtle change to language.
I appreciate the conversation that we've been having and we've veered in a little bit different direction from what's in the protocol manual, but I feel like it was a good discussion that was, that was worth going. In terms of the actual protocol manual, I don't think it makes sense to add language because we get to vote on who we want to be on the boards and commissions. And, and we get to live out our values in that vote. In terms of everything else that we said, I really enjoyed the conversation around type of outreach being probably more of a problem than what is said in the outreach itself. And, and I would love for us to be more intentional about finding the sub-communities within Bothell that we don't hear from as often as we'd like to. All right. I think we can move on.
All right. Great, thank you. So the next section we'd like some guidance on is section 7.14 regarding remote attendance, formerly called attendance via speakerphone. We're seeking direction on this. We plan, we anticipate that when we do come back in person with the council, we're still going to be doing hybrid meetings for the public, maybe certain consultants. And, you know, we need to know, does council expect that all council members be in, at the dais? How do we put language in there to allow, you know, remote attendance and just, you know, make sure that we have, it's, it's reiterated that city clerk's office be notified at least 24 hours in advance, who will be attending on all way? So we want to get your thoughts on that because the stuff for the, when it was formally, it was attendance via speakerphone and had, like you could only do it a couple of times for one subject. So we need to have council input on what they'd like to see for this.
Councilmember McNeil? Oh, you're, you're still muted, councilmember.
Apologies. Laura, can you remind us what it is now?
One second. So right now, it says, my glasses, you're making a little small print. Right now, it says from time to time, a council member will not be able to be physically present at a council meeting, but will want to be involved in the discussion or decision on a particular agenda item. On the rare occasion, we will allow attendance via speakerphone. Attendance via speakerphone should be a rare exception, not a rule. An ABS is limited twice a year per council member. And then it lists examples of where ABS would be appropriate, an agenda item that is time sensitive or needed for a quorum, an agenda item of very high importance to the council member that cannot be physically present. It is important for all council members to be involved in the decision, but one council member is unable to be physically present and ABS shall be limited to one agenda item, not the entire council meeting. That's what it currently says. And of course, obviously with COVID, we kind of. Now we're all merging, so.
So we have, we didn't change the protocol manual because of the pandemic or COVID. We, we left it as is, but we've been operating under emergency proclamation. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think it's important to be flexible and remain flexible, especially during this time. So I'm, I'm in favor of removing what's currently there and perhaps replacing it with what we were currently doing. My only recommendation to include in there would be recommending language that any council member that is present, is present for the whole agenda item topic, just so that we're all having that rich discussion. You know, we're, we're all taking the vote together and that would be my only request is that we're all, we're all present for the entire agenda item, if it's going to be less than a full meeting.
Councilmember Zorn?
Yeah, what councilmember Manke said, I think it is important to, to be part of that discussion before you vote. So I don't know if we want to add language to that. My, my other concern is, does staff have the ability, does the city, does city hall have the ability to do remote attendance? If we can check that box, I'm to, I'm totally fine with whether or not it's just a single item or the whole meeting. The other thing is, is that I would like to remove the language of limitations on how often a council member can do this. We have a current council member who's a state legislator. We've had a council member in the, we've had a couple of council members in the past who've been fighting cancer. There's a, there's a number of reasons why someone is going to need to be absent more than a couple of times. So I would like to remove that language. And I think, I think that's the sum total, hang on a second, this is page 38 of our agenda packet. Yeah, no, I would like to remove the language that limits how often a council member can do that. It's up to the voting public to decide whether or not that was, that worked for them in being represented. But I don't, given today's technology, I don't think there's any reason why we have to limit that.
Councilmember Doer?
Oh my gosh. Well, for obvious reasons, I would prefer to be able to attend remotely, if at all possible. And I agree, I mean, in the past, even if someone's on vacation, if they can attend, let them attend, the more voices, the better. So I, I agree with all of my previous colleagues who already stated their reasons.
Councilmember Aldix?
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I would add my voice to my previous council members who have said exactly what, what was just said. I think there's lots of reasons why we have the technology for it. We've gotten very flexible and nimble when it comes to being able to get somebody in a meeting if they are, for whatever reason, at a distance. And so I, I support what has been proposed.
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn, did you accidentally raise your hand when you turned your video off? I'm going to assume yes. Yeah, I, I agree with the consensus here tonight. I don't understand why we would have restrictions in place for councilmembers who want to participate in council meetings. And did anybody else read through this and think, participation by speakerphone? What year was this written in? Because after the last two years, this feels far more normal than I wish it felt. Further, I just, I liked what council mayor, councilmember Zorn said. It's up to the voting public to decide if we're representing them well or not. And if they feel that somebody is representing them remotely too much and they don't like that, it's the public's job to call that out. But, but ultimately, I, I'd just be in favor of striking this entire section. And if we want to add something about attending remotely, I believe council chambers are, have been set up for hybrid meetings. And we should have the technology to do this now. And the more participation we get from our council, the better, I think. And, you know, we go on vacations, we have lives, we get sick, we have jobs to take us out of town. And, and I'm all, I'm, I'm here for more participation. All right. It seems like we had.
I'll just, I'll just say that I, I'd like to keep it in there. Well, we'll obviously strike this language, it's currently in there. But because I'd like to at least have some language in there that says that we need, you know, the clerk's office needs 24 hours notice at least.
How would you feel about putting something in there that strongly recommends that? What I don't want this to be used for is if it, something happens and, you know, I have been, you know, attempting to get back someplace, but I was, you know, almost caught in a fire and couldn't get through last two summers ago. And, and, you know, sometimes stuff happens at the last minute, so I'd prefer it not be an absolute, but more of a recommendation.
Yep, we can do that.
And if somebody's giving you five minutes notice, like multiple weeks in a row, like we'll just, we'll, we'll have a talk with them and say, please don't do that. That makes Laura unhappy.
All right. Thank you. The next section is section 803, and this has regarding visitor comment during special meetings. We had numerous special meetings this last year. And we were often asked the question, why are we allowing, why, why do we have visitor comment at special meetings? So councils ask for a little bit of flexibility and foregoing that at special meetings and staff would like confirmation to insert some language into the protocol manual regarding whether or not we have it or, you know, something that says, you know, it's up to council. I don't know. We just want some guidance on this, please.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Councilmember Zorn?
The girl has to remember to take down her lower hand. However, I do have something to say. So at first blush, and I'm interested in hearing what other council members have to say, we've had some historic in the last year or so, historically really long councilment, council sessions. And I don't think that if we forego visitor comment during special meetings, that we are stifling free speech and a chance for the public to speak up. So I, I like that, adding that flexibility so that we don't totally burn out our council members. Some may like to run for reelection. So I'm fine with allowing some flexibility there.
And to clarify, Laura, this is not for every special meeting. This is for on the occasions when we feel it is appropriate that we have the option, correct?
Correct. Maybe I'll have Erin jump in. Maybe I'll have Erin jump in here, but, um, yeah, it would be more like certain council meetings that say, do you want to have council, do you want to allow visitor comment at this one?
Yeah.
And maybe we take it off, you know, just the flexibility to do so. Because right now, it says that we have visitor comment at every single meeting, including special meetings.
And I think to help the clerk out a little bit is that, um, in the event where a special meeting is only special because it's scheduled on a date that is atypical, we would have a visitor section there. So if it was just, it was the fourth Tuesday of a month instead of being the second Tuesday, for example, if there was a holiday or some such thing. But the special meetings that are one topic, and the one that immediately comes to mind is all of the executive sessions that council had last year for city manager candidate interviews and that process, to add a visitor comment section for special meetings like that seemed a little awkward.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Uh, thank you for clarifying, uh, interim city manager. I was gonna ask, this, then you're saying a specific kind of special meeting, which is executive session, which may or may not require, most likely is not an acquire a, uh, public comment, because there isn't a topic that's probably spoken about for the, for visitors to comment on. Uh, so, uh, yeah, I think for those kind of meetings, it's perfect, I, I feel it's, you know, there, if there's nothing to weigh in on, then there's nothing to weigh in on. How, uh, but I do think in general that, uh, you know, visitor comment is the one, is one way, uh, for the public to, you know, communicate with us, uh, on the record. So, uh, I feel it's important to have that. But yeah, thank you for clarifying, uh, executive session. I think it's okay, I, I feel like it's okay for us to have the flexibility of not having a visitor comment section.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. I did remember to unmute this time. So, when we say, when we say special meeting, every, uh, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but every meeting that we have, we have to come out, do a roll call, and all that, even for a special meeting. Is that correct? And in order to have an executive session, do we have to have a meeting special? We just, we have to be at a meeting, correct? So, um, we can't just go into executive session without at least coming out, taking roll call, and doing all that. So I'm, I'm asking these questions because the deputy mayor brought up, brought up a point, and I want to make sure that I'm clear on it. So, because I, I believe, uh, what interim city manager said, I, I, I agree with that. It, it seems kind of cumbersome to have the public comment at a bunch of meetings that are just repeat meetings for, you know, looking at hiring the city manager. But at the same time, there may be things that come up that the community wants to voice their opinion on that week, or at that moment. And so, I respect, uh, time is important to all of us, right? We, we value our time. But I think it's also important to value our community wanting to at least be heard, uh, at the time that they want to be heard. And if, if that means allowing a few moments, um, at the beginning of a meeting or during a meeting, to hear their voices, I, I just think that's important. But that, that's just my opinion, but, but I, and as I'm listening to this, I think, how many times have we really had that many public comments that have, you know, some high-profile things, yes, have taken us late, but those are important conversations and important to hear from the community. So, any and all opportunities that we can provide to the community to speak to us, I think are important. But yeah, I, I, that's just my opinion.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra.
Thank you for, uh, giving me, uh, seconds. I, I agree, Councilmember, uh, McNeil, I, uh, that's why it's, it's, uh, it's gonna be a tough one. Because we, we are here to represent the people, and there might be a topic that comes up that particular week that a bunch of, you know, residents are very passionate about, and they decide to talk to us about that. So we do need to be careful on where, how, I mean, it's gonna be a delicate balance, and I feel it's gonna be an art. Because on one hand, I agree with, uh, you know, Councilmember Zornz, you know, we don't want to burn ourselves out. On the other hand, we are here to hear the issues and concerns of the people. So, it's gonna be a delicate balance. The executive session, we may, you know, figure out a cadence for when we do public comment, or maybe provide other alternative, alternative way to get in touch with us. So, uh, it's, it's gonna be, uh, this is a tough one, so for the executive session specifically.
Councilmember Aldricks.
Thank you, Mayor. My thoughts on this is that, um, people are creatures of habit, and it's hard enough to get, uh, to, to get people to want to engage in local government and provide public comment. And when we make changes to our routine, then the opportunity becomes less routine, less expected, less, um, less, uh, consistent, and then people don't count on it as much. And, and I think of it as, you know, from the perspective of a member of the community, that we just kind of get used to knowing, well, council meetings are happening on Tuesday nights, and I can give public comment. And when there's exceptions to the public comment rules, it does feel like a barrier has been put up, and it does become exclusionary in a way. Because then people then have to, like, go dig and figure out, well, why is this an exception, and what's going on here? And when's my next opportunity? I, I think that when we take barriers down, uh, we are able to better serve the people. And so, I am, I am leaning towards not foregoing visitor comment, because I do not begrudge any member of the public that takes the time and is invested enough to show up to any meeting, even if it's even if it's an exceptional meeting of some kind, I still would like to be able to keep that routine and, um, and welcome and include people. So that's where I'm leaning on this, on this topic. Thank you.
I feel like, in a general sense, if any action is expected, or there's going to be any public conversation of any kind, that public comment isn't optional, like, we need to do that. In a narrow use case where we are, um, making a hiring decision, doing something that's, um, you know, HR-oriented, and the only purpose of the meeting is to have that executive session, I'm fine with having the flexibility to do that in very narrow use cases. You know, I agree with Councilmember Aldricks, when she said if you take people out of their routine, and like, suddenly they can't comment, that, that is erecting a barrier. I would just point out that these meetings are already special meetings that are very out of the routine. You know, this isn't restricting, uh, comment on any, any normal meeting, any meeting where we're doing, uh, taking action or, or discussing the city business. I am, I, I mean, again, to me, this seems like more of a procedural change, because I don't recall a ton of public comment on, you know, special meetings that were only for executive session to interview somebody. So I don't feel that there's a, a, a large voice, we'd be excluding from that. It would just be i- in the name of efficiency is, is how I see it. And if, uh, Laura or Erin, if you guys want to clarify that, you're welcome to.
I, I think you clarified it very well, Mayor, thank you. And again, this is council's document, and it's council's choice on it. Staff heard some, some questions about it during the last sessions, and we wanted to bring it to your attention for discussion.
All right, well, it looks like we're all out of, all out of comment on this one. I am, I don't know what to do here, because I don't know if we should call a vote or whatnot, but, um, I'm, I'm inclined if, if the council isn't sure about this, and if there are concerns that this may stifle people, um, I'm inclined to, uh, not do this. You know, but again, this isn't saying we don't want to accept public comment in these meetings. This is saying we simply want to have the option, in case we think that it's the appropriate thing to do at the time. Is there anybody on the dais that feels strongly about their opinion? Councilmember Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really can understand everyone's comments, and it's, it's a difficult call. But I'm thinking about specific, the specific meetings where, in fact, even if someone commented right before we go into a four-hour interview process with city managers, we're not paying attention. That's not where our minds at. So I just don't think there's a lot of value in allowing public comment at a time when we're focused on something else, and we know we're gonna be in there for a long time. Their, their comments just get lost in the shuffle. And so I would tend to, um, again, as the mayor said, focus it narrowly on times when we know we're gonna have like a three or four hour meeting on one specific topic. And we just need to get, get to the work. But, um, you know, obviously with sensitivity around, um, making sure that, um, the public never feels that they're not, um, you know, welcome. They can always reach us by email, uh, and most of our, most of our phone numbers are on the website as well.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I think you had asked if we feel pretty strongly. And, and I do feel pretty strongly about my, my comments. And, um, you know, for me, when, when the public comments, I listen, I listen with an open and, open ear and intently. Hearing from the community, they're the people who, who elected me to be here. So I do want to hear from them whenever, wherever, whenever. But when I'm sitting on the dais, or when I'm sitting virtually listening, and somebody's giving public comment, I'm listening intently with purpose, because they took the time out of their day to come speak to me. So, um, I do feel strongly about it, that, uh, that I want to hear from them at, uh, any and all meetings where possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Aldricks.
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo Councilmember McNeil and say that I also feel strongly that, um, that I, I do not begrudge anybody who wants to have the opportunity to be heard, and I, I welcome and value and celebrate their contribution, even if it's an off case. So, those are my thoughts, and I will put my strong feelings behind it.
Does anybody feel strongly in the other direction? Me neither. And I think, uh, I think that works for me in terms of, uh, ending this discussion. I don't think we're going to move forward with this one.
Thank you. Next, we have placing items on the agenda. So currently, this is Section eight oh four. Currently, the protocol manual says that council members interested in adding agenda items to a council agenda may bring their items forward on a quarterly basis during the quarterly goal scorecard update. This will give the council the opportunity to review the current work mode, discuss the item being considered, determine if stock capacity and resources are available, and reprioritize workloads if necessary, and vote to add the item to the scorecard as a strategic objective. We would like to know if council would like, we recommend updating this section. And so, we've provided you, and in your packet, several examples of what other cities do, and other methods of placing items on the agenda here below. Include council consensus by a council committee, by the mayor, by an advisory board of commissioners. So, I'm opening this up, ask you to let us know your thoughts.
Councilmember Duer.
Uh, I really appreciate, uh, staff bringing this, um, before us. I felt like the current process in the protocol manual basically stifled, um, any ability for council to add things to the agenda, because, uh, quarterly, we would get those, um, reports, um, and typically at the end of a very long night, which did not really give us a lot, a lot of opportunity to ask for things to be added. And so council conversation became kind of an ad hoc way around, around that. Um, and council conversation really should probably be more around, um, less, uh, less politicking and more just kind of trying to understand, uh, you know, share information with each other and celebrate the community. So that's, that's what I'm feeling, and I, I think all of these methods, um, make sense.
Councilmember Aldricks, did I see you earlier? Yes.
I will defer to Councilmember Zornz.
Oh, Councilmember Zornz.
Oh, thank you. I'll ma- I'll make it brief. I do not want to give staff whiplash with us coming up with the agenda items, um, just right at the end of a, um, uh, council meeting and council conversations. And I agree with, uh, Councilmember Duer that separating that and keeping it, council conversations within the realm of what we intended it to be, more conversational, is great. The thing, I, and, and I like all of these options as well. The only thing is that we really need to be on top of what is happening with the projected agenda, so that when we put something quarterly, seems like it's, um, yeah, at the end of council session, yeah, we're toast. And, um, so being able to have a discussion about rearranging some things on the projected agenda, and knowing that what it is going to cost staff in order to accommodate us with something that we want to have a conversation and make a decision about, is great. We're just gonna need to get right on top of our projected agenda and do that on a more regular basis.
Councilmember Aldricks.
I support changing the current, uh, the current structure. And, and, you know, I wasn't around for the decision to make it a quarterly basis, but, um, I believe in the power of representative democracy, and that legislation must, uh, be able to respond to the needs of the community. And so I am in support of, of changing the quarterly, for sure. And, um, I guess I'd like to have a conversation about the merits and, um, thoughts of the different ways that this could be done. I appreciated the information in our, um, in our packet of various ways that other cities have done it. And I don't necessarily have any one way that I'm leaning towards, but I'd very much like to see a, a new procedure implemented, uh, one that allows us to be nimble, and doesn't make us wait several months to, to get things on the agenda. So, thank you.
Councilmember Alcabra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I like this because, uh, I immediately wore my product management hat to the technology space, and, uh, looking at these agendas as new features that, to be added to any particular me, to a particular meeting. And I, and the thing that triggered that was the Olympia City Council. I mean, the, the, the other one, the, uh, I can't remember which city it was, the, sorry, the, whichever city had the CTAC, CTAC had like a four-pager, the Olympia has a two-pager. Uh, I think we do need something to, uh, because we can't, it will be good, uh, for us to have a discussion and for, you know, our, our, our staff to You know, our our staff to understand why we're proposing what we're proposing, what problems we want to solve and what the solution proposed solution is. And for prior and to prioritize it against the other stuff that needs to get worked on. Or need to be discussed for that particular, you know, meeting that we're proposing it for. So I I like the 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 proposal, the the change on for changing this from a quarterly to a faster. Cadence of proposals. I also like the having maybe a one pager to state what the problem is and what this. What the agenda item is and why it's important to be included in the next meeting or two meetings from now, which. To dovetail on Councilmember Zornz's discussion, we need to be informed of what the agendas are in the future. Maybe a week, maybe two weeks in advance, might be hard, but that way, once we get our. Inputs in through this request, then we start building that backlog of agenda items for the future, you know. So, yeah, I I I like this because once we, the question I have though is the the process of how are we going to discuss. Prioritization of what to discuss for any particular meeting. I don't know if that's going to be between the proposer like me, I suggest something and then. I sit with the clerk and city manager and discuss it or and the mayor and like or how what's the process going to be like. Or how have they done it at Olympia?
Councilmember Manke.
Thank you, Mayor. I also appreciate this this new process and this new idea of a process coming forward. I don't think quarterly is quick enough to react to the changing needs of our community. So I love that this is being brought forward. Looking at the examples provided to us, I think Olympia's was a lot better than C-Tax. C-Tax seemed overly burdensome and. Lengthy and I think Olympia's two page request form was just the right amount to, you know, have somebody refine their idea. To the point where it be presentable. And I can't remember if it was theirs or somebody else's, but. I like the idea of having other council members support for any ideas that come forward. I think. The one that had one had one other council member, I think I'd like to see two. So there's at least three people that are interested in seeing something come forward and. That are buying into whatever ideas being put forward. But other than that, I I really like this this idea and I think it. It will help us get to the the things that we need to get to to speak about.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the comments of most of the council. You know, the the way that we have section eight oh four right now. Essentially is just a way to restrict council participation in meetings. And, you know, when. Rules erect barriers and I I would much rather err on the side of dealing with a problem when it comes up. Then. Essentially shutting down discussion because there might possibly be a problem someday. And and you know, there there may be issues with that if, you know, someday two people want to throw fourteen items on an agenda like and that's a bad idea. You know, we can deal with those problems then. But I do think, you know, with this body. I'd really like to err on the side of having more conversation rather than less. So, yeah, I I too and I want to echo Councilmember Duer's kind of. When she kicked this conversation off, thank you, staff, for bringing this to us. I I just want to acknowledge that when we have more conversations, it makes more work for you. And you you brought us something that that I think. Will work much better for us in the community we represent. And I appreciate it. Deputy Mayor.
I I just have that question about the process. Okay, we proposed something. How is it? How is it gonna work? Oh, interim city manager, maybe she has the answer.
I'll bet she does.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Mayor. A proposal, if you will, I hear quite a bit of support for the. City of Olympia type of form. We staff could bring back an an option, a form option, very simple. And then that could be submitted to the city manager and then we could review it, have time to understand what. Type of staff it may require or other resources it may require. And then. I've spoken with the clerk about adding a standing item on the council agenda where we could review those requests. To add items to the agenda so that council could discuss if they are, if you are all interested in hearing that item. So. It wouldn't just be a decision between decision of the city manager or of the mayor to to add items on there. It would be. A a conversation with the council if if you all felt it, it was worth the the effort to bring it back. If that if that works for you and we can also add elements of these other items as far as, you know, if there is something that's more. Urgent instead of requiring a a form to do it, if it's a matter of we'd like to, you know, have somebody come and speak to us. We'd like to do a proclamation on something, something like that, that is fairly kind of low hanging fruit and fairly easy to. Easy to implement. We could have kind of a a combination of methods to add items to the agenda would be my. My recommendation from staff.
I think that sounds like a good idea. Does anybody disagree? There we go. Uh, Deputy Mayor, Alcabra.
I'm sorry, I I don't know what the protocol is, but the Councilmember Zornz had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Zornz, your your hand is like the exact same shade as the bridge. So I miss it at times. I'm sorry.
Thank you. It's good to know somebody's got my back. Um, I I I like what we're talking about here. I just. You know, want to encourage council to be mindful that when we give our goals to staff. They try to find ways to implement it within the resources of staff and what and what we. Our resources. So. Everybody, please throw out ideas, but just be, it's my request to be respectful of when staff says. This is going to be something that we can do to help you meet a goal. That we we temper it with a little bit of understanding because they have constraints that they're working within. As we ask them to meet our goals and objectives.
Especially since staff is showing us so much deference in saying, here, we're gonna make it easier for you to give us work to do. All right, does anybody else have anything to talk about on this one or should we move on? It looks like a move on. Um, city clerk is there? Is that the last one from the protocol manual?
That's the last one that I staff had questions on. Obviously, this is the council's protocol manual and this is. If there's any other changes you'd like to address, bring up, can certainly do that. I will say that all changes will be incorporated in the protocol manual for adoption on January eighteenth. That's probably not gonna happen. I'm looking more like. February first, so based on the conversation. This is your manual, so.
I was just gonna say, fill out a form, send it over to us, propose it, we'll take a look at it and we'll get back to you with dates. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Councilmember Manke.
Thank you, man. I just had a couple other recommended updates. One of them's a quick and easy one, Laura. Page seventy boards and commissions matrix under the special requirement, it says for a least. Should be for at least, I think it's just that.
Yeah, I you know, thank you for bringing that up. There there's a couple of things on that matrix that are outdated and I was gonna bring that up actually. We'll make sure that we get. New matrix because we've got still, we've got nine people on Parks and Arts Commission. It still says seven, so we'll make sure. We get that updated as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
Great, thank you. Two other ones that that I noticed. One is a question. So section two point zero eight, D, four and five, those. Are not really city council protocols. They're more for onboarding of new boarding commission members. So. I'm curious, do we need to have them in our protocol manual since they don't relate at all to us? Or do we need to have them in there since boards and commissions? Fall under. Kind of our purview.
I mean, that's totally up to the council. That's been in there for as long as I can remember, as long as I've been here, but it's totally, like I said, it's your document if. If you wanna. Remove those, then I'm I'm with that.
Okay, my recommendation to council would be to remove them just because they don't relate to us conducting business as a as a body. They're more towards the boarding commission onboarding. I can say it again, it's section two point zero eight, D, four and five. And then the the last one that I just wanted to call out was, I think we should add under section eleven dot zero six. B B. I believe we should add under basic steps to conducting business, a new step number five. Where the the presiding officer calls for a motion, typical Roberts rules of order. We just don't have it reflected in our protocol manual. So those are my only recommended updates.
Can you repeat that section again?
Uh, section eleven dot zero six B and then subsection B.
Okay, got it.
And with that, I'll yield.
Councilmember Zornz.
Okay, I I answered the phone to a couple constituents who asked me to. Chew on chew on and noodle a couple items. So and and a couple items are also my own, so I'll try to go as fast as I as I can. On page forty three of our agenda packet, it's eight point zero seven. Is there a way, because we often, when we get emails from the public, we don't get them. Until like right before city council starts and they're and often those emails are connected with something that we're going to be talking about. So I know staff is busy trying to get everything together for city council. Could we on the website, when people are sending a comment through, I'm trying to figure out how to make this easier. Could we? On the website where people are submitting a comment for testimony or just submitting a written letter, they're not going to do public testimony. Could we also encourage them to use that same to go to the e our emails and send it off to us? So that we can get them even in on Tuesdays, if we can get things an hour or two even sooner. It helps when we have busy Tuesdays for us working stiffs, as our mayor put it. So if there's something that we can do it. Easier to expedite when somebody has a comment about some agenda item, how can we do that without burdening staff? And still get it in time for council members to look at. This is a comment from a constituent who said, how can we look at those letters that come in? So that. I don't know if council wants to be talking about that, but it would be nice. After, maybe after we have met to attach written comments that we get to an agenda packet so the public can go see what people have written to us. And see them.
We're actually doing that. We're actually, now that we're uploading our agenda packets to Laserfish. When we get those comments, we're including those in the back of the packet. Behind, but we're doing.
Look at you. Good, 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 good.
They they are there and they'll be, the public will be able to access that to see those written comments. After the meet, you know, after we get the meeting packet done, we'll we'll add them as they come in. But we have a deadline that we give. They have to submit by three o'clock the afternoon of the meeting and that that's to allow us to get time to get it to you, to get our list together and all that. So.
Yeah, I don't.
I can make some recommendations on this part and then bring that back to council.
Okay, something, you know, even an an hour can make all the difference on whether or not we see something or not, which is. To the person who's writing, that matters a lot that we have a chance to see their thoughts and but I don't want it to become burdensome on your end. Let's see. Also, I would love at some point, I realize when we get public testimony. That we're just receiving it, we don't have a chance to respond to it. And I'm not asking for a response. Just any kind of response, but there's been times where where somebody's had testimony and I would love to do a clarifying question. And get more information from them. I don't know how you feel, but I don't know how we would add that procedurally into our protocol manual. Then also on page forty four of our agenda packet, it's when somebody does testimony and they haven't signed up ahead of time, they give us. Their address and as of late, we've been a little protective of people publicly giving their addresses out. Is that something that when somebody who hadn't planned to speak and is speaking, they could just. Send that to to whoever's clerk that night and so their address is on record and you are already doing that. That's what you're gonna tell me.
No, actually, we stopped. We stopped it. Thank you for the catch because we actually stopped asking for their addresses years ago.
Okay, so we can cross it out.
Yeah, just because even when we were still in person meetings on the signup sheet, we gave it as an option. If they were, it was optional. Just, you know, just have their name. So we can just strike that.
Okay, that works for me. And then. Let's see, on page forty seven, I think it's under eight point zero eight, it's when we do electronic voting. Do we need to add remote meetings, voting yes or no?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the section?
Yeah, it's page forty seven, it's eight. Point zero nine and it's subpoint F, electronic voting. Do we want to add a point G for remote meetings? And voting is yes or no? Or is that just, is that just?
Yeah, well, actually, this obviously was pre-COVID, so because we're in an emergency situation. You know, I I think if we just change it to a vote, will you take my voice, voice vote?
Oh, perfect. Okay. And then just a shout out and thank you for the reminder of not texting, whether we're doing this remotely or from the dais. And adding other forms of communication, social media. So whoever the staff members that came up thought to do that, thank you for doing that. And I that's it. So anybody else who wants to step in, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Well, if nobody else has anything to say about that, Laura, thank you so much. We appreciate it. And we will move on to council conversations. So if anybody has any topics they'd like to discuss. Raise your hand. Councilmember Zornz, are you raising your hand or is it just still up?
It's still up, but I have something to say and then I'll put it down. Sorry about that. I can't wait till we get back to the yellow cards.
You're welcome. You're welcome to use the yellow cards. It's just that when she was presenting, I could only see a couple council members at a time.
All right, we're going to yellow cards soon anyway, but keeping.
Really quickly, just to say that the mailboxes in the council office have been updated with your names and titles. And the yellow cards, if you don't have them, are in your mailboxes right now. So if you want to stop by City Hall, you can. And now I leave.
Alternatively, Councilmember Zornz, you could use the yellow hand. It would provide contrast.
Yes.
Yellow hand, yellow hand. I can do the card and the yellow hand.
You can change the color of the hand.
Oh, something to play with. Okay, um, I just, I learned, okay, so this this is where we can have light handed. Hearted conversation, right? I found out that I can desaturate the camera so I can make everything black and white, including myself. And I thought, how great would that be for April Fools? But any rate, but so if I can change the color of my hand. But any rate, but so if I can change the color of my hand, that's great too. But I just want to thank councilmember McNeil for, I have a dream. Years ago, I participated in a choir. We, it was a multi-ethnic, multicultural group of 100 voices that sang tribute for his, his hard work. And he was not a perfect man, but boy, he shouldered so much. And thank you for that reminder. I have a couple of grandchildren who are, who are of African-American and Japanese descent. So this is, this is meaningful to watch that they have, they have a future and that we carry that ball forward. So I hope everyone, when we do hit Monday, is mindful and, and pauses at least with some reflection of gratitude. And that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Aldricks?
On the note of King Junior Day, I'm really grateful to staff for the day of service and how well branded marketed. And, and just how, how many times I have seen it in many different contexts already. I'm just really impressed that they were able to put that together and, and invite the community to participate in days of service. And I heard just recently that there's perhaps another day of service that will become perpetually part of our calendar, which may, may be January 6th as a, as a way to counter the anti-democratic views of people who would attack our government. And so I don't know if that is ever going to be official on our calendar. But I know that when an attack on our government did occur on 9/11, that's, that's part of the legacy of, of how we honor and remember that day is that 9/11 is now a day of service too. So for everybody who is listening and kudos to you, if you're a member of the public who is listening. I very much encourage you to look at the, the city website to find the day of service resources, including links to justserve.org. And that has different opportunities to volunteer in our community. It's sort of like online shopping, but for volunteer opportunities. And, and I just really love that in this day of technology, we have tried to make service opportunities more accessible and easier to find so that not knowing who and how to contact somebody is not the excuse for why we don't get involved. And that there are lots of opportunities to, to be engaged. So thanks for bringing that up, councilmembers Zorn's. And, and I see that this Monday is an opportunity to get out there and, and serve our community. So thank you.
Councilmember Manki?
I just wanted to say thank you to staff for all your help last week with the recology pickup emails that came through. Even the one from an unincorporated Somers County resident, helping connect them to waste management. Really appreciate all your help making sure that recology got through all the pickups. So it's a small thing, but it's a big thing for our neighbors and they definitely let us hear about it. So thank you.
Councilmember Dewar?
I concur. And actually, it was, it was the one time I was sort of glad I was suffering with everyone else because I have credibility when I said, I know, my house is overflowing with garbage too. So I appreciate staff being so quick to, to respond to inquiries about those emails and, and get recology's response.
I know we all felt a little bit like the North End transfer station that they're, they're looking at relocating from Houghton was located in our house for a couple of weeks.
Especially since it was right after Christmas. And I have kids who have grandparents who live all across the country. And so there's just a lot of extra boxes that just, we were very, very excited for, for pickup to occur.
All right. Well, if nobody else has, oh, oh, councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. I was waiting for my house to get a little quieter before I started to speak because there's a, there's some kids studying in the background. Councilmember Zorn, thank you for your acknowledgement. I have a dream obviously means a, a lot to all of us. And to me, I dream, my dream is that the youth today will grow up much different than the youth of yesterday. And they will be provided the opportunities that those in the past didn't have. And we can all come together and we can bond and unite as a country, as a nation, as a world where everybody is treated the same equally without any bias. And so we continue that fight each and every day. And we have small little wins along the way. And I'm, I'm super excited to be able to be elected as a council member, to be able to do great things for my community and service as a council member. But I'm also super excited and, and honored to be a, a coach in the community and to be able to coach kids and youth. And this weekend, on, on January 16th, one day before what we'll, we'll start to celebrate, we are going to have 100, over 100 kids, 100 families come to Bothell for a lacrosse tryout event at the, the Bothell North Creek Fields Four. And I was talking to interim city manager earlier today, and that's a special moment because we all fight for opportunities for kids to get out and be active. And Bothell has done something to provide an opportunity for all these youth, boys and girls. And it's, and it's sight unseen. It's not known the impact that it's having on these kids when these kids can come together, be out, be active. And the power of what that was for when I was a kid and how it changed my life and made me who I am today. I just thank the City of Bothell for the opportunity to be able to be out there with those kids, to be able to give them the opportunity to be out active and play a sport they love. We, we now have the opportunity to play at Popkinny this year. It's just first time we were able to fundraise the North Shore Schools Foundation and, and raise the funds to be able to have those kids, boys and girls, be able to play a sport they love at Popkinny and, and have the same opportunities as other sports. So to, you know, as far as having a dream, I have a dream, but I'm thankful today as well. I'm thankful that I've had the opportunity to impact so many. I'm thankful that I get the opportunity to serve with all of you. But, but more importantly, I'm thankful to my community, the City of Bothell staff for all their hard work and dedication for everything they do that's on sight unseen, that makes our community warm and welcoming. And I just look forward to what's next. So thank you for your acknowledgement, councilmembers Zorn's and, and, and all of you for all your hard work and dedication to the community. Trust me when I tell you, it, it does not go unnoticed.
Councilmember Aldricks?
I, I really appreciate this conversation and I want to make an offer to the council. And it's something that I'd considered, but it's, it's relevant now. And that is that a couple of years ago, there's a big, long story. Something about I collect art that has to do with history and I change it every year because I like to teach my kids about history. And one of the pieces of art that I collected was a, a print done by the artist by the name of Kadir Nelson. And you've maybe seen his children's books. His, one of the things that I do every year for Martin Luther King Junior Day is I, I pull out a Kadir Nelson children's book about Martin Luther King and I read it to my kids. And it's about the I Have a Dream speech in the March on Washington. And so another one of Kadir Nelson's works is called After the Storm. It's one that he painted in the hopes of a better, brighter future. At, when we weather the pandemic, once the pandemic has passed, how there is the potential for us to come together stronger as a community. Now, this is a very large painting, print, it's a print of the painting that I have. We're talking like, oh, perhaps two and a half feet by three and a half feet. And that was the only size that I could get it in. It's in my home. I have it on the wall, but I thought, what a beautiful expression of unity. If I were to offer to loan it to the city council office? And is that something that you all would be interested in hanging on the wall? I obviously Google it. It's called After the Storm, Kadir Nelson. I don't know if, if this is an interactive meeting, if we can share it here. But that was just something that I'd like to offer and see if anybody is interested or would like to display that.
Councilmember Aldricks, I think that sounds like a great idea and a great conversation for us to just continue to have. I don't know that I want to call a voter and make that decision right now, but I, I love the idea.
Unfortunately, we can't really enjoy it. Except when we go get our mail.
And your yellow cards.
Yeah, it's definitely more aspirational at this point. There was that brief moment around Christmas where we're like, maybe we can do office hours in person. I, and masked or maybe we're close to that and we're back to not, not, it's going to be a while. But I still love the idea of the hope of a better tomorrow and that when we come together, it's more likely to happen.
All right. Well, thank you all for having the meeting tonight and the discussion. Thank you staff for preparing everything. If there's no objection, I think we'll adjourn. Bye, everyone.